I think there's going to be a lot of work that this council inherits from former councils. We have our library renovation, the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, putting in place our racial equity framework, our affordable housing and economic development strategic plan. So there's a lot of work they're inheriting and need to dig into. And it's nice that we have three years so that the new members can kind of get their feet underneath them, get used to the job a little bit, and then put in place their own initiatives that they'll want to work on and have time to do that.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council with Clerk Hall of Row.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Okay.
Councilmember Cierci.
Sorry. All right. Good evening, everyone. We had a slight change to our agenda this evening. The council was scheduled to convene to go into vote to go into a closed session to discuss pending litigation regarding the Washington McLaughlin property in Dorothy Woods. Because the flu has taken out our city attorney and unfortunately our colleague, Councilmember Smith, that will be rescheduled till next week. Just to provide people with a short update on that, the U.S. Department of Housing and Development and Fairview Investment Fund, the two entities that hold liens on both the city-owned Dorothy Woods parcel and the adjacent Washington McLaughlin Christian School-owned property have reached an agreement and will be discussing the implications of that agreement at our next week's closed session, and then we'll update the public on that. So that will be next week. Also, next week during our public meeting that will begin at 7:30, we have a voting session. First, we have a resolution supporting a stronger Maryland renewable portfolio standard and affirming the city's commitment to energy efficiency and renewable energy actions to combat climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I had to find a shorter title for that resolution. All right. We have a single reading ordinance authorizing the lease installation and support for Canon photocopiers and a first reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of furniture for the Human Resource Department. Our work session next week will be an update from the Crossroads Farmers Market, a presentation of the police employee's retirement plan, staff overview of utility work in the city, a PEPCO presentation on the Tacoma-Tuscaloosa Electric System Infrastructure Project, and an update on the library renovation. Then on Wednesday, February 7th, at 7:30, our voting session includes first reading ordinance amending the code regarding outdoor cafes, which we have the work session on tonight, first reading ordinance amending the code regarding boards and commissions, specifically the facade advisory board in our work sessions tonight on that, and then another first reading ordinance amending the code regarding commercial district facade regulations. We also have a resolution affirming the council's intention to amend Section 702 of the city charter, which we discussed in a work session last week. We have a second reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of furniture for the Human Resource Department and a single reading ordinance regarding purchase of police vehicles. Our work session that night will be on city council priorities, and we're scheduled to have Washington Adventist Hospital come and brief us that evening. On Wednesday, February 14th, we will be having a council meeting. Our work sessions will be on process for updating and providing information on the work of state highway, and specifically we will talk about including the Piney Branch-Ritchie Avenue intersection on our list of state highway projects we're requesting. We will talk about the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, and we have a presentation of the Montgomery County Development Review Process to make sure people are familiar with that process as we move forward with the Tacoma Junction redevelopment project. So that takes us into mid-February. Before turning to comments from the public, I just wanted to let people know this week, you may have seen, we have a statement on the city website regarding the news that we received from Washington Adventist Hospital. As we say in the statement, "The city council is stunned and dismayed to learn from the hospital officials that they are seeking permission from the state to move several key health facilities out of the city that they had pledged throughout the certificate of need process would remain on the Tacoma Park campus once they moved the acute care hospital to White Oak in the summer of 2019." The officials informed myself and the city council that the hospital has been evaluating the relocation of the inpatient psychiatric hospital and the inpatient physical rehabilitation hospital units. This information was shared to us at a closed session that we had on Monday evening with the Vice President for Business Development, and then I was able to talk to the President of Adventist Healthcare, Terry Ford, on the morning of January 23rd and had it confirmed. I'll note that in the two years since they received their certificate of need, city staff, myself, and my colleagues have been meeting with Washington Adventist Hospital to discuss plans for the campus, what is to be left there. We have lobbied for additional investments in the campus to bolster its financial feasibility, and we jointly pursued a feasibility study for an aquatics facility that might be added to the campus. We had no indication that consideration was being given by the hospital to not provide the services described in the certificate of need application. In addition, if they are permitted to move the behavioral health, that is the inpatient psychiatric hospital, which they would likely merge with the behavioral health facility in Rockville adjacent to the Shady Grove Adventist Hospital, this would mean that we would lose the behavioral health unit in Tacoma Park. And that's a great concern to all of us up here as well as our police department, because more than a dozen of the police agencies in this area transport persons having mental health crises to the Tacoma Park facility. At times, these patients are violent or difficult to control, so a long transport from here to Rockville or nearby Prince George's County or Silver Spring increases the possibility of injury, stress for patients, families, and the police officers. If the behavioral and rehabilitation units are moved, it's also likely that the supporting laboratory and radiology services that we were told were staying on the campus will also move. The remaining elements were to include a 24-hour urgent care center. This is a clinic that was specified in the con process, and as far as we've been told right now by the officials of the hospital, they are still planning to have the 24-hour urgent care facility there. The two other things, a community clinic that is there and a clinic serving women without health insurance. We are unsure if, given the other things that are not staying on the campus, if they will continue to be on this campus. We were also learned on Monday night, after they did a feasibility study looking at the financial feasibility of having a freestanding medical facility, that they would not be able to afford this, and the hospital therefore is not pursuing a standalone emergency facility on the campus. For people's information, the zoning of the hospital property is R-60. That means single-family residential. The hospital was allowed to use the site via a special exception. Without a hospital on the site, a zoning change would be required for almost any use other than single-family residential development. Our concerns over the years have been expressed about the medical facilities being moved, and in addition, the fact that we would be left with aging buildings and an empty campus. I want to assure you that the Tacoma Park City Council will continue to pursue information in the plans under consideration and that we will work to ensure that the property remains a valuable asset, meeting all the vital needs of the Tacoma Park community. We have updated the city website to include more information on this and the background information as well. And as I said, we just received this information in the last couple of days. We have reached out to county council officials as well as officials in Annapolis and even our congresspeople to make them aware of the situation, and we will be working on it over the next couple of weeks and months. So with that, I just wanted to make that announcement. The full statement, as I said, is on the city website. We will now turn to our voting items this evening and public comment on voting items. Our one voting item is a resolution adopting council procedures. Any public comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move to general public comments. So if people have just public comments on any issue, they can come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Mr. Lovelace, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, I'd like to tell everybody that wanting to know what you did on Martin Luther King Day. I was just getting out of the hospital. I couldn't get a ride to the -- I couldn't get a ride to the Women's March, but I got a ride to the Martin Luther King Parade. I was in the parade carrying the peace sign representing Tacoma Park. I had my peace delegate t-shirt on and everything, even though it was awful cold out that day, too. It was on a wind chill of about 18. But it warmed up, and I managed to have a great time. My wheelchair, my wheel was in the wheelchair. The front wheel, called a caster, broke off in a pothole. And we were rough riding it for a while, and then we got home. Everything was safe. But I've often wondered what the purpose of those front wheels are. Now I know. But I'm glad I had the peace sign with me at the time because I was able to use that to brace myself against the ground so I wouldn't be thrown out of the wheelchair and break something. And it turned out that the day turned out to be a complete success despite the wheelchair problem, which that wheelchair is going to be serviced so I can get a good wheelchair that works right. And I'd like to tell everybody out there that next year, again, I'll be doing something for Martin Luther King, somehow or other. I'll be doing something, because he's my hero. He's one I looked up to even as a kid. And my father threw me out because of it, and I couldn't stand his racism language. Put me away when I was 11. And I managed to overcome all that and still keep my side for social justice and peace. And I learned a lot while I was there. And I'd like to have everybody else think about when something goes negative, what positive you can learn out of it, and then look back on it to see if you did it right. And you'll find out things change. And I want to thank Candace and Bruce Wolf for bringing me to this meeting tonight, because they say they can't do it all the time. And we got to find another way of transportation, another person who can help me out to get me down to these meetings, preferably somebody from Tacoma Park, who can get me around to these different meetings and functions, because I really want to continue my work as a peace delegate and also as a worker for peace and justice. And I don't know how much time I've got left. I get scared every time I go to the hospital because it gets rougher and rougher and rougher. But I did overcome the surgeries pretty well. They took a gallbladder out and they treated my toe. It was going gangrenous, and they treated it before it was too late. And I managed to make it. Unless in a week after, less than a week and a half after surgery, I'm out there at the parade. Thank you very much. And again, work for peace and social justice and also work for the city workers, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Next?
My name is Bruce Wolf. I live on Garland Avenue. We're actually about a half a block outside the city limits. But our life, we've been there for 30 years, and our life's been wrapped up with the city, so take an interest in it. I just want to say, also, as a person who's been a union person all his working life, I want to comment that I believe, I'm sorry, I should have said mayor and city council, I really urge you to get down to the business of negotiating fairly with your city workers. They deserve it. You know, they work hard. They're, you know, maybe they may be invisible to some people, but they're out there doing really important work. They deserve a right, a good wage. They deserve all the benefits they have. But most important, they deserve the respect of the city and sitting down and actually getting this bargaining over with. And I think they've been waiting for a while. And so I want to urge you to proceed with that. And I believe that this city is made, there are many union members and people who work for unions who live in the city. And I think I can say that they probably would like to see you do the right thing, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, Laura Barclay of the Old Tacoma Business Association. I'm here to encourage you to proceed with the amendment of city code to provide a sidewalk cafe permit process for local businesses, which will allow the consumption of alcohol in the public right of way. As you're aware, sidewalk seating enhances the streetscape, adds vibrancy and activity to a commercial district. Our businesses would like to enhance their businesses, attract customers, and increase revenue with continued sidewalk seating that includes the consumption of alcohol. We have two businesses currently seeking the ability to serve alcohol in their outdoor seating, Tacoma Beverage Company and Kinda, who came in October to speak. They've been operating without this ability and have lost customers and revenue when visitors learn they can enjoy a drink with their dinner outside. In addition, two new businesses, Soul Food and our newly announced CLO Rojo coming to 7056 Carroll Avenue, are also both interested in offering customers outdoor dining with alcohol service. We think that following the existing Montgomery County guidelines for sidewalk cafe permits with alcohol service will be the easiest way forward. Any deviation may disadvantage our businesses in Tacoma Park. Additionally, existing city ordinances pertaining to trash, to noise can address any potential issues, the perceived issues along with this program. We ask that the city also implement this program expeditiously and without a pilot period, recognizing that it successfully operates elsewhere in the county already. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
I'm Lorraine Pierceall with Historic Tacoma, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the codes that Roz will talk to you more about a little later, about getting rid of many of them. With respect to the facade advisory board, of which I am a member, I'm comfortable with this. We don't use these codes, and many of them are very outdated and confusing. And so it doesn't really further or help the work that we do, the advisory work that we do. I want to step away from the facade advisory board for a moment, if I may, and just talk a little bit about what is in here that may be of interest, and I think we should consider a little bit further. Because of the tremendous need I think we have with respect to the commercial residential interface, and there have been a lot of issues, I know, in our historic district and perhaps elsewhere, and there's the neighborhoods that exist right next to commercial operations are particularly at risk, and there are very specific issues pertaining to them. And so there are, in fact, as I look at some of these codes, some things that I think could be potentially useful to us, as I hope we talk more about this, and having some kind of a framework or an ordinance that would address this particular need. For example, there's an exterior lighting code that would be very useful to still have somewhere. And there's, I noticed that there's even a refuge and storage areas being screened from adjacent properties in public rights way. These are issues that neighbors are having right now. And so as you look at this and as you deliberate on what to do, I want to underscore the importance of not forgetting this commercial residential interface issue. And I think Councilmember Kovar can speak to what he has seen and the need for it. So this could be, don't throw away things that are useful. Figure out if there's a way to take some of this and put it somewhere else where it could be very helpful. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right. Seeing none now, we'll move to council comments. Any council members' comments this evening? Councilmember Cierci?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a special thanks to the Purple Line Now group. I had an opportunity on Thursday to attend a forum that they had to invite Secretary for Transportation, Secretary Ron, who prefers to be called Pete, to the event to talk about some of the potential impacts of the Purple Line on a number of communities and some of the things that MDOT may be doing to try to address challenges in the timeline for construction and things of that nature. I also want to thank the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Development Authority for inviting me to a reception at that event. And particularly, I had a chance to meet with Ralph Bennett, who is the director, the president of the Board of Directors for Purple Line Now. It was a really great event, and I actually had the opportunity to ask the secretary about whether or not there may be state funds available to help with road improvement for those state-owned highways that will be directly impacted as a result of Purple Line, so Purple Line construction. So for example, New Hampshire Avenue, perhaps Carroll Avenue, those roads that although they don't have a station themselves, will likely have to be improved in terms of pedestrian safety, in terms of visibility, and things like that. So it was nice to have the opportunity to ask the question, and I greatly appreciate the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Development Authority for the invitation. And I look forward to working with the city in drafting a follow-up letter to the secretary to get a little bit more clarity on how we could work together with the state to try to ensure that resources are being devoted to help a number of communities that will be impacted by the Purple Line through improving those state highways that will also be affected. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Three things really quickly. Washington Gas is back working in the Long Branch neighborhood. So far, I haven't received any complaints this week. In fact, I had a couple of comments that they thought that people were, that trucks had been moved. A couple of things were going better than before. We are still trying to set up a date to get everybody together. The Neighborhood Association President and I are working on that. Second, tomorrow, late afternoon, is a county planning board hearing on the Ethan Allen Jackson Two House subdivision. I haven't had any, I've had very few comments from people in the immediate neighborhood. The city is planning to attend the public hearing tomorrow, late afternoon, and to acknowledge that the county has worked with the developer to push the first house, the one that is on the corner with Ethan Allen, back five feet. Maybe not completely in line with all the other houses, but further back than it was. So stay tuned on that one. And last but not least, I am now the representative for Tacoma Park to the Council of Governments Chesapeake Bay Committee. We met last week. It was very informative. They've hit the ground running on legislative issues in Maryland, Virginia, and the district related to water quality and the Chesapeake Bay both. So if anybody wants to hear more, just talk to me separately. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Two things also, and I believe the first one, the city manager may also be talking about, but WSSC has an upcoming project replacing the water main along the length of Philadelphia Avenue through the city. There was a previous meeting on this topic last year, and I urge them to come back when it got closer, because a lot of people came to that meeting. But I think when something is as much as a year off, there tends to not be a lot of focus on it. So I encourage people to attend, and the meeting will be February the 6th, which is a Tuesday, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. here in the community center. And just one thing, and maybe the, just, I don't know whether the city manager could say anything about it now, but something for us to think about is with all the other projects that are happening in the city, how these things mesh, and in particular, I've heard from people who are concerned about potential conflicts of that with the work that's being, will be, being done. We anticipate at Tacoma Junction potentially also with the library, since a lot of that is all part of the same general section of the city. And I believe previously they were looking at doing it sooner, and we asked them to hold off because Philadelphia Avenue was one of the main detours when Carroll Avenue was closed, when the Carroll Avenue Bridge was being done. And of course, they did agree to do that, and then there was a water main break on Philadelphia Avenue near the intersection with Boston, kind of illustrating the need for this work to be done. So it will be disruptive, and we just want to make sure that meshes properly with, to the extent that we can, with the other projects that are taking place. The one other thing I just wanted to mention, and following up on Lorraine Pierceall's comments about this question of the interface between commercial and residential areas, we had some fairly limited language on that general topic in last year's council priorities document. We're going through this month, and in fact, our second so-called retreat by the council is tomorrow night to begin to refine what our priorities are going to be for the coming year. And I'm just going to mention that I would like to see us toughen that language a little bit to really at least review what the existing code requirements are that may apply to those kinds of things, lighting, garbage, noise, et cetera, that can happen where commercial and residential areas meet up, and then consider what additional steps we can take to address those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I was pleased to hear your report on the agenda that the study's going to be done on traffic on Ritchie Avenue. And I-
Oh, we're going to talk about it. We're going to talk about it. I didn't promise.
Just trying to already build impressions.
That's an experienced council member right there.
You say it.
And Ms. Ludlow, I wanted to call your attention to the area where WSSC did their work on Maple Avenue, that we have a serious depression in the road, and I hope that we can get something filled in there. Thank you.
Great. All right. Let's move on then to city manager comments.
Usually you have some, so I'm sorry.
I am exhausted on the hospital.
Thanks. And so just, I do have my city manager comments. They're always appended to the agenda on the webpage, and it also has more kind of links about the hospital items. I did want to give a heads up that we have, I've received a request to amend the schedule for the city's Tacoma Junction redevelopment project by NDC, and I'm reviewing it. There's some questions I'm trying to get resolved before it's something to approve and post. The recommended dates for first bringing the combined site plan to council and then a council vote have been moved on the rolling agenda to April and May, reflecting that request. As I said, it's not been approved yet, but that's what it looks like. They are taking more time, as I had mentioned before, getting more information from various development agencies, development review agencies, as well as some stakeholders. So we'll hear back on that. One of the things-
One of the things that they are requesting is additional time to identify an anchor tenant because many anchor tenants want to know what it looks like before they're ready to sign. So, so I think that information, I'm hoping, will be finalized and posted next week. I also want to provide with it a simplified schedule because the long, the big grid is very difficult for people to, to read. Councilwoman Kovar mentioned the WSSC information meeting. Actually, and also responding to questions about, you know, how do the various projects match and that kind of thing, next week we are having a discussion about utility work in the city. So that starts to get to some of that. It's not necessarily covering the city projects, but Daryl knows all the city projects as well, so we will address those.
Thank you.
We are intending on having a resident survey this spring, and so a request for proposals has been issued, and a link to that request for proposals, if people are interested, is on our website. We have been trying to clean up a little bit our project pages for major projects, and it's particularly the, when you go to initiatives, simplifying the list, and we put the project director at the top as opposed to in the P section, which is kind of useful. So it's a little bit easier to find some of the information. We have highlighting the Washington Venice Hospital relocation project on the, on the webpage, as well as ones that have been there, like Tacoma Junction Redevelopment, the Flower Avenue-Green Street project, Ethan Allen Gateway project, and the library renovation. And so continue to, especially when lots of stuff is popping and you can't actually get me on the phone or something, please look on the project page. And kind of related to that, we have kudos to Jeremy Dickey, our media specialist, who keeps up our webpage, who keeps social media popping and helpful for residents. And one of the things that we were really happy to hear is that in a meeting of his peers of other, kind of media specialists from other jurisdictions in the area, they all were lauding him, lauding the work of the city, asking how many people, how big a staff does he have? And I was like, it's him. And, and saying that they often look to the way that we share information and try to copy it. So it was really a nice, it was a nice kudos from, from them, and I also want to extend our kudos, that it's very helpful, his, the work that he does for us. I think that's all the information I have.
Great. Can I realize, oh, okay, Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ludlow, I was noting in one of our conversations with the MML a couple of weeks ago, the recommendation that we talk to our residents about the homestead tax.
That's right.
And, and also another interesting one that he brought up was the renters' tax rebate.
That's right.
And I would like to suggest that we ask the media specialists to put a page on the website that not only notifies people about that, but for the renters' tax rebate, there's a calculation that has to be performed. It's very simple to put in two numbers, which is the income, the family income, and the rent paid, and calculate what the rebate would be. It's not so easy when you sit down and have to look up in the table of, you know, what the numbers are on how to do the calculation.
Okay.
That would be a super addition to the website, to be able to, to have someone put in their, their income and their rent, and be told what the rebate would be, whether it would be zero or, or higher, and then to have the, the form, you know, available for them to print out and fill in and mail to the state.
We'll look into it and see what we can do.
While we're looking into it, we should note that February is when we need to-
I understand the deadline's coming up, but I'll need, we have, we'll look into it.
Sure. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
That sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. And I realized I skipped over that tomorrow night, because we don't see enough of each other, we have our second meeting of our, the city council retreat. We had one Friday, late afternoon. Tomorrow night, the city council will be meeting from 6:30 to 8:30 to continue to set our priorities, and we will be in the hydrangea room. And I think that's it. We will now move to our first voting item, and only voting item this evening, a resolution adopting council procedures. Everyone should have it in front of them, and a updated version was posted on the website. I want to say thank you to Mr. Sherman for his input on this, as we've updated the information regarding, and the procedure regarding, public comments. Would someone like to move the resolution?
Moving.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick. Any comments or discussion?
It's good.
It's good? All right. Councilmember Siemens and Kovar, you both have your lights on. Are those-
No, that's it. Those are all.
All right. Then all those in favor of the resolution adopting, adopting council rules of procedure, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? No? Then we will move on to our first work session. The first item on our work session this evening is a discussion of amending the Tacoma Park Code Title VIII regarding businesses, specifically regarding outdoor cafes.
I have my mic on. We're joined by Christopher Johansson about, who is, works in our planning unit, and he's done lots of work on this, and really appreciate the information that he's compiled, and he'll walk us through. Terrific.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, and council members. After conducting regulatory research pertaining to sidewalk cafes, staff recommends that the council approve the amendment to Chapter 8.16 of the city code to allow sidewalk cafe seating, including alcohol sales and consumption. Tonight, I will briefly provide some background and context for the policy change and outline some key issues. As discussed in the October 4th council meeting, restaurant owners have expressed interest in expanding their operations to include sidewalk seating with food and alcohol sales. Outdoor alcohol sales are regulated by the county's Department of Liquor Control and require approval from the municipality. The city has no permitting process in place for restaurants to operate sidewalk cafes on the public right-of-way. The restaurants in the city that currently have outdoor seating are operating under the sidewalk sales code, which is really for retail, outdoor retail sales, and is not really a good fit. Because the city does not have a regulatory process in place to approve outdoor cafes on public sidewalks, the restaurants are unable to obtain a permit for outdoor sale of alcohol from the county. So if the county approves this additional text to be added to Chapter VIII, city staff will then develop administrative regulations for the implementation and enforcement of this new cafe policy. So given that background, I'll review some of the benefits as well, some of the concerns, and highlight some actual, some of the details of the code. Sidewalk cafes will encourage additional pedestrian traffic and make Tacoma Park an even more interesting place for walking and dining. In addition, the cities of restaurants argue that with this amendment, they can better compete with those in surrounding communities that do permit outdoor cafe seating with alcohol service. Sidewalk cafes support the council's priority of, priority to advance economic development by increasing the economic vitality of its business districts, attracting new businesses, and will complement existing commercial uses while maintaining the character of Tacoma Park. Along with the advantages of sidewalk cafes, there are also valid concerns to be addressed and considered. One is that outdoor alcohol consumption may lead to more incidents of public drunkenness. We spoke with Police Captain Rick Bowers, who indicated that he had no concerns about the possibility of allowing outdoor seating at cafes with alcohol service. Captain Bowers expects few alcohol-related problems to result from this limited increase of outdoor seating. So to mitigate this concern, the permitting process will consider a history, restaurants' history of excessive noise or incidents of public drunkenness in deciding whether or not to grant the sidewalk cafe permit. If there are violations, the city has a range of mechanisms, of enforcement mechanisms, including temporary suspension of the restaurant's permit or permanent, or permanently revoking the permit. In addition, the hours of operation will be regulated by the city and can be modified as needed. Pedestrian safety is an issue due to possible obstructions from tables, chairs, barriers, and so forth. The Americans with Disabilities Act generally requires five feet of unobstructed sidewalk width for the passage of disabled citizens. Of course, we will be in full compliance with the ADA. Barriers will be required to provide visible demarcation of the sidewalk from the cafe seating area. In some parts of the city, there is not a lot of room for sidewalk cafes to operate. However, there are several ways to create additional space for outdoor cafes. For example, the city can close Laurel Street to vehicle traffic on Friday and Saturday evenings to accommodate sidewalk cafes. And outdoor eating and drinking always has potential to generate more trash and increase the proliferation of rodents, but there have been no such problems with the existing restaurants that have sidewalk seating. And the code makes clear that all maintenance and upkeep will be the responsibility of the cafe owner. Not only will establishments be required to comply with applicable health regulations, the city may impose additional health and public welfare stipulations. There are fiscal considerations to take into account, such as permit and application fees, the lease rate per square foot of right-of-way use for outdoor cafe space, administrative costs, and city staff time required to implement and maintain this program. The memo that you have before you includes an appendix of regulatory options to consider as the city develops a new sidewalk cafe policy and permitting process. There's a draft of text to add to Chapter VIII of the city code. This concludes my remarks, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And I'll just, as he mentioned, at the back of this package is draft text that could be added to our code that would allow for these outdoor cafe seating areas. And so that's, that would be what would be, actually, there's a little bit more in it than I would like, so it might be some of this could go into administrative regulations. Nevertheless, this is a good start. And then the other information that's in your packet are examples from other jurisdictions and from the county about the standards that are often used for these.
Great. Thank you. To organize our conversation tonight, I think we will just do general comments first and questions regarding the report, and then we can look at the back pages and look at the suggested addition to the city code. So I will start with Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the comprehensive work that you've put into this. Appreciate it. I just wanted to, a couple of questions. One is that this is a policy that would be citywide?
Yes.
Okay. And as part of that, then, I know that there's been a heavy interest from the Old Tacoma area, and many of your comments focused on the Old Tacoma area. Have you talked with the Crossroads Development Authority or the businesses in that area to see how they feel with this?
I personally have not. Others may have. Here comes Ross.
We, we did talk with Melanie Isis about this, head of the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads CDA. The, it's important to remember that the large shopping centers at the intersection of University and New Hampshire are privately owned. And so if those businesses chose to do something like this, that would be an arrangement between those businesses and the property owner, just as Rascos has outdoor seating on private property now. So it wouldn't be in the public right-of-way. They would still be required to follow county health inspection, and they would have to be in, in compliance with all the liquor control board requirements, but it wouldn't go through the city process for public property. That's what we're really talking about here on the city-
Okay. So that explains the emphasis on the Old Tacoma area, then?
There are other areas that might have enough space to do it. Erie and Flower, of course, also has the large privately-owned parking lot in front.
Maple Avenue sidewalk might be another one.
Maple Avenue sidewalk. There would probably be room there if they wanted to. So it's not intended to be exclusive to Old Town. It's just that the geography and ownership configurations are such that it's probably more likely there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Great. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I think this would be a great benefit to the community and to businesses to allow this. I was really excited by some of the ideas and recommendations that were in this related to doing some kind of innovative things, like closing the streets to offer opportunities for more of a plaza feel and people walking around and sitting. I also really liked the idea of parklets, the, so cover, that you could cover up some of the parking spaces to allow for more seating. And I wanted to ask, is that something that would be allowed? Would we need to address certain language to make that possible, or is that something that would be allowed in the code as it's, as it's proposed here?
I believe it would be allowed by the proposed code.
Okay.
On city streets, on, you know, public.
Right. And, and just to, you know, one of the things I think would show up is in the regulations. You know, there may be a differential of, of a process and a rental fee when, like a parking space is used. Okay. And then I think moving forward, one thing we might want to think about related to that is whether we would want to make, and I don't know what the range of design features are for parklets, but whether we would want to specify certain parameters of what they look like, or, you know, the size of them, or some shape or material that they are, to make sure that there's some consistency across those things if they're being purchased by individual restaurants. My other questions were, let me just look here. In the, the code that we're looking at here, there's no specification of an hour when it would be, when we would be stopping the allowance of, of people being outside on the sidewalks. Is there currently a, any restriction on when, how late, I can imagine there would be, but how late these, some of these businesses can be open? In theory, could a business be open 24 hours a day, and if we don't restrict this, they could have a sidewalk cafe all, all night?
No. That's, to my, as far as I know, that's, that's not the case at all. Usually, in other jurisdictions that, in the, you know, Maryland and Virginia area, the, the hours cannot extend beyond, the cafe hours do not, outdoor cafe hours do not extend beyond the normal restaurant hours. And in fact, there often are stipulations, though, they have to close out the outdoor first.
Okay.
There are hours stipulated in their liquor licenses.
Okay.
And so depending on the type of liquor license they have, they have limitations on when, how late they can serve.
Okay. So that would apply to the, when they could serve the liquor, but not necessarily to when the sidewalk, if they weren't serving liquor, would be open? Okay.
Yeah, those are two different things.
And then I had some questions about the leasing. In the, the, the language that you gave here, and I don't want to get too specific into the specifics now, but I believe that you mentioned leasing specifically in the language that you, you gave here, but then one of the kind of questions that you presented was, did we want to lease the sidewalk to businesses? And I was just curious, is that something that is different than, than permitting them? Or is, or is that sort of just a different use of language?
Oh, it's different from, from permitting. I mean, it's, it's an idea. It just is, say, the parklets that you mentioned, but generally what I've seen with those is that if there's a parallel parking spot, then that becomes the park, the parklet with, or two different spaces with tables. And I don't think the actual leasing of the sidewalk space is that common.
So, so the leasing would apply to the, more to the parklets?
Well, the question is if council wants to choose to rent the sidewalk or the, or parking spaces, rent public property to the businesses for this purpose.
Okay.
You can choose to do so or not. The sidewalk sales permits could be argued would fall in a similar way, but are, are not leased. They, you know, give the, a business the capacity to put out a, a table of items to sell when, when they choose to.
Permits are usually either the first time that you start or on an annual basis. You know, if we would choose, and if the council would want to pursue a leasing arrangement, it also might be by size. You know, so there's a variety of things that might, might be involved with that. And I don't think that we necessarily have a recommendation about that.
Is that something that Montgomery County does? Or do they lease, or is it just a strict- Or do they lease, or is it just a strict permitting?
Oh, I don't believe Montgomery County leases, no.
Okay. Okay. And then my final question for right now is, it looks like we're defining who can do this pretty strictly in terms of it being a restaurant or a cafe. I think there were a couple of different descriptions in there. It occurred to me that there might be a business like the Co-op, for example, or a convenience store that might want to have some seating that isn't necessarily a restaurant. Is that, or would that be covered under some of the permissions that we're already using to allow some places outside of restaurants, or is that something we would want to more loosely define?
The, this was actually, this code, proposed code change was just specifically to deal with the problem of restaurants in Tacoma Park not being able to get a liquor license from the county because of us, the city not having a process for permitting sidewalk cafes on public space, public sidewalks, rather.
The county is very, very specific in their liquor licenses. So if the Co-op wants to have outdoor seating for people to eat something they've purchased there, they already do, in fact, and they use city property for that as well where the picnic tables are. But to serve, to serve alcohol outdoors is a, is a very different process under the county law and a different liquor license than selling bottles that cannot be consumed on-site.
I would like to say, though, for that, the, I enjoy seeing outdoor seating, but it does need to adhere to the rules that allow for good passage of people through the area. So there may be some other version of this that allows for just general outdoor seating of a business that would not allow alcohol.
Yeah. Yeah, that was more my question, was if there was a different kind of business that wanted some sort of outdoor seating, would that make sense?
Okay. That's good to raise. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah. Couple of my questions have already been addressed, but two, one about disabilities and the other about alcohol. So I think that the draft regulations say that if the restaurant already has an alcoholic beverage license, then whatever those rules are apply to outdoor as well. So there's no additional set of permitting with the city or with the county?
We can make it more stringent, but we.
Well, I'm not saying we should. I'm just trying to clarify. So essentially, this, we have the outdoor cafe, if we adopt this, we have an outdoor cafe process, which then would or wouldn't, could, could apply to organizations that don't have a liquor license.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So it doesn't, if I understand it, you're not, you're not suggesting that we do anything to change the licensing of a particular restaurant? If they're allowed to serve wine and beer till 10 o'clock, then that's what they're allowed to do outside?
Well, currently, they can't sell alcohol.
Right. So I, I mean, to me, it is up to the council to determine how late you might want something outside. And they, it can't be more generous than, than the liquor board says for alcohol sales if alcohol is used, but it certainly can, it can be tighter than that.
Okay. So that would be one of the key questions.
Right.
But the way it is now, it's the same, never mind. I get it. That would be the question.
Okay.
Do we want to make that more strict? And then I just wanted you to say a little bit more about how this intersects with requirements for disability access. I read, I read this, and I got, there were a lot of details, and I got a little confused about whether this applies anything significant, anything dramatically new and/or expensive to a particular business or not.
In order to make an area that's not, currently not ADA compliant, to make that compliant, is that the?
So are there sidewalks that are not ADA compliant, and is this what we're getting at? And then if it.
No, no. This is, the primary purpose and reference.
It's access.
Reference to ADA is making sure that people can pass.
Through.
Pass through the area, pass by the restaurant unimpeded. And there's not, other than what maybe a county code requires just for restaurants in general, there's not something that's special that calls out what they do, simply how it's placed.
Right. Well, because that's important, I mean, to make sure that's right.
Right.
Okay.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Very helpful.
Thank you.
I'm supportive of doing this, and I wanted to mention that, I appreciate Laura Barclay's presentation from OTBA, All-Town Business Association. By chance, there happened to be a gathering of OTBA members last night. Councilmember DeBala and I were there, were kind of following each other around this week. But two of the businesses that are interested in doing this happened to be represented there. They weren't able to be here, but it was Kendah, the Thai restaurant, and also Tacoma Bevco, which is the new place, both right along Laurel Avenue. And they both indicated to me their support for this, and they may separately send in written comments at some point, but I just had a few questions I wanted to ask you. So at that particular spot, which is along Laurel Avenue in the same block where the post office is located, the current seats and tables that they have are in a separate part of the sidewalk that's closer to the street, and I assume under this, they would probably stay there. So the existing pathway between that is wide enough to satisfy what you've proposed in this, I take it?
Yeah, well, the requirements that the ADA puts out will definitely be met, and that's a five-foot.
But that's met at that site?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And then the other thing, I thought I saw in reading this, and maybe I missed it, in the county requirements, there's also something that access, at least one of the tables has to be accessible. So do we think that would be doable there, too, as far as we know?
No. I'll defer on that one.
Well, that's always, that's always a requirement of restaurants, and so that generally, especially for outdoor cafes, it's usually movable chairs. So you, there's a chair that can be moved so that a wheelchair could.
That makes sense. So then on the liquor control issue, you have table service to help ensure that you don't have people just wandering around or getting excessive amounts of drink, or handing it to a child or something like that. And I will mention that Chris Brown, who's the owner of Tacoma Bevco, told me that they have a lot of training on ensuring that servers recognize when people have had too much and that they don't do it. And, you know, he's the one who signs the permit, could get in trouble if they didn't. So he kind of assured me that that would be something they'd watch closely if we went forward with this, as they do now. So on the timing for the closure, you said they could close sooner than the liquor laws require in the county. Could the outside be required to close sooner than the inside as well, separate from the liquor requirements?
Yes.
Okay. And there's nothing about historic preservation, like the sidewalks don't need to be changed in any way here, right? It's just temporary tables and chairs, so that, that has no impact. Is that correct?
Yeah, or the case of the idea of closing off Laurel, that would be a larger area.
But it's not physical.
But yeah, it's not a permanent change.
Because it's not permitted. Yeah, right. So on the parklet, my only observation would be, if you have one or two spots with the parklet, almost every day when people pull in to park there, they sort of crash into the other little fences there, so I would just worry about the safety for that. But that's just a thought. I'd actually love to explore, at the end of Sunday Market Day, when people aren't going to be going to the post office, maybe leaving open one side of Laurel, even after the people in the market go away. So that would be something I'd be interested in exploring. I think the key issues otherwise then are just, and was mentioned, making sure that trash and noise are properly addressed, and it seems to me that they could be, those places seem to be doing a perfectly good, good job with that. So I would like us to go for it if we can. I would agree, I think, also with the city manager, that maybe the amount of detail in this proposal could be in regulation rather than ordinance, but it's, the details seem okay to me. So, thank you.
Yes, and for, you know, for the parklets, the idea is that they, they're very temporary. They could be just rolled in, rolled out for just the evening, and then during the day, it's open for regular parking.
Okay.
Great. Councilmember Ciercy?
Thank you so much for this presentation. It's been great, and thank you for answering one of my questions that Terry asked about the crossroads. I know we've been talking a lot about hours, and it made me think about the noise ordinance. So would these outdoor cafes have to comply with the noise ordinance, which would mean that daytime ends at 8:00 p.m. on the weekdays, and daytime ends at 10:00 p.m. on the weekends? So is the idea that with the outdoor cafe, they would still have to adhere to the noise ordinance? Because I would believe that if you had lots of folks outside, and maybe there's typically music, which I love the idea, I want it, want it. But that typically kind of generates noise that would probably fall, you know, higher than what's outlined in the noise ordinance. So I would encourage you all to, to think about whether or not they would need to be in compliance with the noise ordinance, which would perhaps dictate the closure hours.
Yeah. I think so.
Yes, the noise ordinance would rule, and, you know, that really does have the obligation to the manager to keep the noise down, and if that's not possible, then it's a violation, and we already stop doing that.
Deal with it with outdoor seating at Republic and a few other places that have outdoor seating.
And they had to change some of their practices.
Yeah. I don't envision it as being, say, creating more noise or later hours than currently exist. So the cafes would still be very useful and, you know, used on a Friday or Saturday night, even if they had to close down at 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
Great. Well, I will just say thank you also to all the work on this. Glad we're moving forward with this. I know a number of the businesses are anxious for us to do this, and I'm also glad that we're cleaning up. When we first started looking into this, I think we were all kind of like, oh, I guess we're, we don't have a permitting process in place for this. So I'm glad we're fixing that now. I guess since we've already, we've dove into the code, I just tell my colleagues, I'm on the back three pages of our packet, I'll just add a couple of questions for this. In B3, we talk about the five-feet clear of obstructions. I understand that's the ADA. I guess one of the questions would be whether or not we want to kind of specify that's why we selected the five feet, so that when we go back and look at this, it doesn't look arbitrary that we're just referencing that we're following, if that makes sense.
Right. What, I mean, the way frankly, you know, I kind of mentioned that some of this is appropriate for administrative regulations. My recommendation for the code is that it say that in no way would this, you know, violate the ADA, because if there's changed rules in the ADA, you don't want to have to like, say that. So that's, so, you know.
That's the direction I was going in. That's even better. Under B6, it says the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in outdoor cafe shall be restricted by the liquor license governing the restaurant. And I didn't, do we also want to say they need to obtain the required liquor license? It seemed like we were restricting them, I don't know, maybe it's, it's fine.
I mean, it certainly would be what you would, you would be submitting a copy of that or the number or whatever with your permit requirement, but we'll see if we should word it differently.
Yeah. And then I would like to suggest a couple of things to move to being administrative and out of the code. One of the things, the conversation we just had that Councilmember Ciercy brought up about the hours and other things, I actually think I would like to see that actually as an administrative and not in the code, because if we put this in place, and I agree, I don't think we should do a pilot, I think we should just, like, do it, but I think we should also have the flexibility to go back and work on it. So I would say B8 goes in administrative, and then B14, A through H also gets real specific, and I think this goes to also a point about making sure, like, furniture is, you know, consistent and everything. And then C1 through 8, also, I thought those could all go into administrative. And I just want to add agreement with looking at this in its next iteration as bigger than just restaurants, because I'd rather just do this once and get it done with. And also, Councilmember Siemens brought up a question to consider is, if we had food trucks that wanted seating around it, do we also want to think about that scenario in this as well? So I think that is all I had on the code language. I just want to open it up for my colleagues to see if they had any other specific things on code. Councilmember Kovar?
I just have one other question. I meant to ask it before, and this occurred to me in the context of the noise that Council Member Ciercy and maybe others have talked about. You know, when the outside gatherings really get noisy is when you not only have people sitting at a table, but lots of other people kind of standing around this. So would this just be, you can only sit at the table and can't have, like, five other friends kind of standing there? Is that something that we need to, we need to talk about? Because I assume that's when you would get noise potentially, as opposed to just two people sitting at a little mini table like we have now.
Well, I think that the way I see it is that if there's a noise complaint from the citizens, then the establishments and violation of the code. And if they're hanging out past, let's say, 10:00 p.m., then they would be in violation of the code. I haven't seen anything regarding the number of people at the tables or anything.
Right. I mean, this is just like any other gathering. At some point, if it's loud, you know, the police are called and said, gee, you're too loud, and take actions if there's.
But I mean, I assume on average, restaurants are not going to be providing table service to people standing there, right? And you can't carry your own drink out, right? So those gathering situations wouldn't really happen, which would be where the biggest noise would be created. I guess that's kind of what I'm thinking.
So the county liquor licenses very, or regulations are very specific about outdoor cafes, that it has to be demarcated, it has to be, has to have a barrier, so there's one entrance. It has to be 36 inches high or something, I don't know exactly.
You can't be standing out the barrier and drinking a beer or something.
So the, what we have been talking about is very specific to that area. That's a demarcated area. So the ones we've mentioned, Tacoma Bevco and Kendah, it's a very small area. It's between the tree boxes and the curb and the public sidewalk, the through sidewalk. And so I think they have three tables now at Tacoma Bevco in the summer, maybe four tables. It's a very small number of people.
And they're all tables for two people. So I guess my only point is, I don't see a huge noise thing just coming from that given.
And anything like handing a drink over is illegal. They'll be shut down. And so as you were saying, they're very well-trained in this, and they are very careful that they don't lose their liquor license by violating those regulations.
One issue is that generally, the cafe area has to be just where the area with the storefront is, that is up to the council.
County allows 50.
The county allows 50 feet. So in terms of what the city council does, what the city ordinance is for public right-of-way, you know, it's up to you, up to you guys.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yeah, I'm unclear on what you were just saying, and about the 50 feet, what is that?
The county allows with, if, if the city allows it, the county allows for the county code that a restaurant can have outdoor seating in front of their establishment and an additional total of 50 feet, so they could go 25 feet on each side. Of course, that would depend on the property owner.
With the permission of the other businesses.
Right.
And that ties in a little with the question I had earlier during the initial presentation. You mentioned even closing Laurel Avenue, and I was trying to picture how that would work with, would that mean just the restaurant that happens to face that Laurel Avenue that would be able to have access to that space? What was the thought there?
It's, it's an idea that we've seen work elsewhere for occasion. It can either be an event-driven activity, or it can be like once a week or something like Friday nights, that one's. that one side might be closed for outdoor seating to enable more room there, and we have the nice median plaza area. But no, it wouldn't only be for any one restaurant, it would need, we would need to find an equitable way to allow the restaurants there to do it, or other businesses who might want.
It could function like a little food court or, you know.
I understand that, but it doesn't, I'm not sure that the legislation as it's been written here would permit that.
That's right, and so part of this, I think, you know, there's, there's kind of the standard process, and then there's also, I think, some creative things that the city may want to do that has to do with, you know, some different locations or different specific events and things, and that would have like some other category that would then need to come to you for approval.
And I'm suggesting that we include that in our.
We should at least have some reference to that so that we can do it, yeah.
Okay, and then the same with the food trucks then?
Right.
So would that be in the administrative regulations?
We'll talk about it, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, this, I was just, this goes back to what we were talking before about the demarcation, so that's not a permanent structure.
It's not permanent.
Right, so when the winter or some other, when they're not operating, it's not there. Okay.
Great, so I think in terms of the code, we've given the feedback, was there anything else in here that we need to comment on in terms of the text for the code?
Can I ask one question, just to make sure? You were saying that you want item 8 moved out of, from B, from the section from B?
Yeah, the code, yeah.
Yeah, out of the code and into the administrative.
Hours of operation, yeah.
Okay.
So that we can more easily address that.
And I would just suggest that the, and Ms. Ludlow knows his best, that put as much, or as little in the code as necessary to control the thing, and then have the regulations which are more flexible and easy to change.
And I would say as little in the code, and when we're pointing to other things like the ADA that may change, we just change with it. So, councilwoman Kostick?
I just wanted to point out that number five specifically notes that the applicant needs to enter into a lease of the right-of-way, and so if there's, based on the decision to use, go that route or not go that route, that would need to be addressed if there's a different direction.
That's right. So we'll be bringing back to you then actual code language and some examples of the admin regs, and maybe some clarifying questions, but I don't, and I'm not sure how soon, but we'll try to move it relatively quickly. We've obviously, and especially Chris has done a lot of work on this.
Great, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to getting this back again, and we do have it on the agenda, so hopefully we can stick that. All right, our next thing, Ms. Grinsby, you sticking with us?
I am.
All right. Item 3 and 4 of our work session, we're going to talk about them together. These are amendment, discussion of amendments to our code having to do with the facade advisory board and commercial district facade regulations. I'll turn it over to you.
Please don't be alarmed when you look at the redlined version of the code. A lot of what we're proposing here is housekeeping. So the facade advisory board, when it was established, was situated in chapter 8, which handles businesses. The other council-appointed committees are in chapter 2. And so the housekeeping part of this is just trying to get the right thing in the right place in the code, so that when people are looking for something, they can find it easily, and it has some conformity of information. So the establishment of the committee details about what constitutes a quorum, what the membership requirements are, facade requires that two of the members be business owners or commercial property owners, two of the members be design professionals, architects, landscape. Historic Tacoma has a seat on the board. That's, all that level of detail now exists in chapter 8. So what we're proposing is to conform with the general structure of that kind of information of council-appointed committees in chapter 2 and move it there. There are a couple substantive changes. One is that the quorum for a seven, the seven-member board currently is listed as three, and we propose changing that to four. And the other substantive change is that currently members are limited to two terms, and we've changed the language to two full terms, because if a person is appointed to fill a vacant seat, they take that term, so they might be appointed a year in or two years in, and we just wanted to clarify that the limit is two full terms. There is not a limit for the Historic Tacoma appointee, they serve one-year terms, and each year Historic Tacoma appoints a new member and alternate, and there's no limit to how many terms they can serve. So the substantive information about the establishment of the committee, other than those points, is unchanged, it's been reformatted to fit the template of other boards. The other part of chapter 8, article 2, which sets the standards, looks significantly different, but this is more a kind of catching up to the reality of the way the code exists today. And I asked Rick Baravecchia to join us, he's our neighborhood services director, and he and I have had many conversations about how this information does or doesn't inform his work. The first thing we say, of course, is that we follow the county's code requirements, and we use the county historic preservation standards. And then we list currently very detailed information about what kinds of downspouts you can have, and what your roof needs to look like, and what kind of lights you can have on your sign. And this has not been updated for many years, and there are discrepancies between what the board wants and what's in the code now, so that creates confusion for business owners who are applying because they want to get a sign. And there are discrepancies between the details in the code now and what the county code has, which is what we name and refer to and use as our standard today. So while this has a lot of red on it, the building code regulations, the sign ordinance for the county, and the current city code of property maintenance in chapter 6, and as well as chapter 10, which includes things like refuse, handling refuse and graffiti, we feel that these existing standards cover better than the confusing detail that's in here. The facade advisory board has discussed this for four years longer, we first introduced it in 2013, and at the September meeting, the committee came to general agreement that they liked what they saw in these code changes, and in the November meeting, I went in with clean version so they could actually read it more clearly, and agreed. And as Lorraine mentioned tonight, I don't know if she's still here, this makes sense to her. She feels like the tools are available in other places that are, that are kept current and are clearer, and that we can refer applicants to more easily. So I'm open to questions, and Rick is here as well to answer questions on code enforcement.
Great, well, thank you, and please tell the facade advisory board, thank you for all their hard work over the last few years on this. I had one question, and I'm not sure if, really if it's for you, Ms. Grinsby. As we change, do this cleanup to the code, I realize it says citizens throughout, can we start using residents, even though our code will then probably go back and forth in some places?
Just a question, Roz, is there anybody that is on the committee, on the board that is not a resident of Tacoma Park?
I don't believe there is now, but there is the capacity for it, because the stipulation that a business, that two seats be filled by business owner or commercial, and/or commercial property owner, it's possible that they wouldn't be Tacoma Park residents.
So we can certainly use resident, and then we may identify or business owner or...
Yeah, in a couple places it does do that already, it's just a citizen or business owner, so we can just say resident, or, and there may, I don't know, there may be.
That's right.
Right, yeah, and the Historic Tacoma folks are called the Historic Tacoma folks, so reps, not folks, so.
Yeah, let's just, they're all folks.
They're all folks, everybody's folks, do it that way. Okay, councilwoman Cersei?
Yes, thank you so much, Roz. So, as, again, to echo the mayor, as we are in cleanup mode, one of the things that stood out to me was the fact that the board focuses heavily on the historic district, and it appears to me that the board should be about ensuring facade maintenance for commercial space throughout the city. So I'm on page 1, under Board Established, where it says the quality and character of commercial buildings in historic commercial district identified as. So I think while we're in the process of moving what the board consists of, and what we're trying to get them to do, and move it with the other segments of the reg that are applicable to the functions of the board, that we really try to make a cognizant, you know, point to make sure that the board's mission isn't specifically focused on one specific commercial area in the city. And while the historic aspect and historic maintenance is important, there are a number of other commercial areas throughout the city that could perhaps benefit from having an advisory board that is focused on trying to ensure consistency and character and charm, and helping folks with identifying resources that may be available to help them improve their signage.
Do you want to answer that?
Do I want to answer it? Well, I mean, it was originally started specifically for the, for the commercial districts within the historic district. Is there a change in sense of that? I mean, certainly, it does function as a local kind of advisor to the county's board, but the, the board has had internal conversations about this, and has expressed the willingness to advise anyone who comes, any commercial establishment, property owner or business owner who, who wants any guidance. The authority for the board comes because of the establishment of the historic district. So people come to the board because they need board review as part of their historic area work permit at the county. And so the board has a formal structure that they follow to review an application, and then it's followed up with a letter that goes to the Historic Preservation Commission at the county. So that's the driving force of businesses coming to the board. They are, the board's certainly been open to advising others, we haven't had any other other businesses or commercial property owners come in the six years I've been staffing the board. What I would like to recommend, though, is if the council wants to kind of widen the charge a bit, I think that's a direction from the council, and so they still would do that more legal function when a historic area work permit is involved. But, you know, we obviously are not advertising it to other businesses, because that's not as primary, has not traditionally been as primary function. So absolutely, if this is, this would be a great time, if you're making any alteration to that charge, to identify it and probably have a discussion then with the, with the facade advisory board about that.
Yeah, I would definitely support that, especially given where we are headed as a city, and the number of current and future economic development needs that we'll have. I think it'll be important to make sure that a board that's mission at its core is to ensure consistency in facade and maintaining character and charm is true for not only the historic district, but for all commercial districts in the city.
Councilwoman Kovar?
Oh, thank you. I note on that point, the language that's being eliminated says that all the commercial properties in the city can participate in this on a voluntary basis, and maybe a lot of them don't want to, because it's, it requires more work to do it, I don't know what the answer is behind that. But on the elimination of the standards, I did want to ask two specific questions, and actually, Lorraine Pierceall mentioned this, so we have the language that says exterior lighting may be installed, but has to be directed onto the building and not toward adjacent roads, and that could apply to houses also, and storage or trash containers shall be screened from public view. So if those have been eliminated here, do we have something like that elsewhere, and if so, where?
It's in the property maintenance code, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's...
And you see now that Rick is shaking his head yes?
Right, I double-checked, it's in the property maintenance code, and I know that there's been interest particularly on the lighting issue, and I believe our city attorney is supposed to be giving us some, just kind of an overview.
Yeah, we could, we could change that if we had to, but in other words, nothing that's in this.
We're not eliminating, we're not eliminating a protection related to refuse or lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kostick?
Thank you for, to you and to the board for all the work on this. I have sort of a very basic question, and it is, is a facade only the front of the building?
For the facade, board reviews for the historic area work permits, it's specific to what can be seen from the sidewalk. So if a building's on a corner, for instance, at 7,000 Carroll, where both sides are quite visible, they're all considered facades. But for the board's review purposes, there have been things that, you know, additions in the back that you can't see from anywhere, no matter where you're standing on the sidewalk, and the board has said we don't have purview of that.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I want to echo some of the interest that Ms. Pierceall expressed in exploring more of these, what we can do to help out residents with some of the light pollution and noise pollution that comes from nearby commercial districts. It seems to me that this is probably not the best place to do that, but I think we can explore that in other, other places. And I just want to echo my support for my colleague, councilmember Cersei's notion of exploring, widening this out a little bit, and I would really like to see a discussion with the board about what their thoughts are on that, and what different sort of missions they would have in different parts of the city. Thank you.
So maybe that would be, have the board come?
Yeah, we'll talk about how to do that.
Councilmember Siemens?
I just wanted to do voice support from Ms. Cersei's suggestion and point out the obvious, that the standard may be different in different parts of the town, and that it would closely relate to something that's not so important in, in the old Tacoma area, and that is the signage ordinance, so you might want to think about how they tie together. Thank you.
I'm sorry, say that again, that the signage is not important in the old...
I said, the signage restrictions are not as important in the old Tacoma area as they are in the, that's the wrong way to say that.
I'm just trying to be clear, I understand.
They are important everywhere, but there are much different kinds of signs in the Tacoma Langley area.
They're different issues.
Yeah. Shoes, get me out of here.
Great, thank you. So I just want to echo also my support for expanding the charge of the board to assist businesses throughout the community, and I think that was, and you know, I agree with councilmember Kovar and councilwoman Kostick, it'll be great once we can, the sliding ordinance is something I've been trying to work on for a while, so I'm looking forward to having that conversation at another time. But I think for tonight, Ms. Grinsby, do you have everything you need from us to move forward? All right, I think we're going to be done now, and we'll be all back together again tomorrow evening. So thank you all, we're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it!